Workshop tonight. There are two items on this workshop, the first being the Bryant Comprehensive Street Maintenance and Widening Plan. I think many of the council members have already witnessed this. It's a very good plan put together by Garnet Engineering. Jennifer Williams will be here to present, and then I will probably scoot over and start managing the GIS maps if you guys have any questions about intersections or roadway projects. With that, I'll pass it over to Jennifer.
Thank you, Ted. Again, I'm Jennifer Williams with Garnet Engineering. I also have Hunter Hobby here with Volker. We've been hired by the city to develop a comprehensive street maintenance and widening plan, basically a long-term plan of maintenance and street improvements over the next 10, 20 years, helping the city prioritize where they should focus, how to spend funds, how to actually come up with funds. That's in the next phase. So the first phase of this project, we are interviewing stakeholders and we're creating a public survey. Some of you may have seen that survey on the website. That survey is open until November 16th. We've got two types of surveys. We've got one which is an interactive survey where you can pinpoint the location of a problem or an area you'd like to see improvement. The second survey is a general survey with questions on where all you would like to see, what types of things you're seeing, what you think the priorities are, and then we even dabble in the funding. What are some of the ways you would consider funding this? We've gotten, as of this morning, about 230 responses on the surveys. It's pretty good. We'd like to see more. Basically, we want to get the word out. We want to make sure anyone that has had comments on the street systems that they're filling these out. So, you know, we asked councilmen, we've asked committees to make sure, tell their folks, go to our homepage, look at the survey, fill it out. We're working on our street system. We've met several of the committees with the city. We have also met and plan to continue meeting with various stakeholders that are involved in the street system in one way or the other, like we've met with fire and EMT, police. We had a very good meeting with them on what they thought the priorities should be in their areas and the problem areas they're having. We've even reached out across the city lines and we've met with Benton Planning and road folks to see what they have coming into the area that could affect the Bryant system. We've met with the mayor, Alexander, because obviously her roads have come across the roads in Bryant. We plan to meet with Chamber folks. We plan to meet with Celine County folks and a few other, the school system, school district, to see what their thoughts are. We're going to compile all this information. We'll come up with a report at the end of the year to present on where we see the lists and the priorities fall. The next phase of the project will be looking at all the data, not just survey opinion, but you all had a study done a couple of years ago on the pavement, the condition of the pavement. We'll take that data. We'll take accident data, congestion data, and we will compile all that to come up with a comprehensive list of projects and priorities. We are also going to do, investigate into the funding system and what, thinking outside the box, what options do we have that we can try to incorporate, because obviously there's never enough money to do all the improvements you want to do. One of the groups we're meeting with is the highway department. We'll meet with their folks on their priorities. Our focus is going to be the city's street system. We'll take comments about private roads and the state highway system. We'll share that information. Can't put that in the priority list for the city projects. Let me think, what else? Really, tonight, it's open discussion. What are you all hearing? What would you like to see done? It's not just about improving the road or widening it. It's where can we make connectivity for ease of traffic or to take off a load from another location. Those are the kind of things we'll look at as well. One thing I like to emphasize is this is not a survey for just Bryant residents. It's for Bryant motorists. We want to make sure we're seeing the big picture of everything going on. That's important. We want to understand what is keeping people from coming to Bryant or various locations within Bryant as well. So with that, I just, open discussion. What are you all hearing? What would you like to see? I do, let me add this again. If you all have Facebook pages or, as you talk to your folks, get this out to them. We've got a few more weeks left to get that filled out. The comments that you all make tonight, we're reporting them. We'll document them and make that part of the survey as well.
So if we assume the vehicle weight has some relevance to asphalt wear and tear, what large vehicle constituents have you spoken to and what do you plan, who do you plan to speak with?
As far as large, big, we are looking at talking to Celine Recycle. That's one of your bigger vehicle. Your buses are. It's a little bit harder to capture your semi trucks, those type groups. We are talking to Builders Association and the real estate groups. That's on our list as well.
I think the school bus drivers would be real good indicators of...
Yes, they will be for roads that are harder to get through to get their students. Exactly.
Yes, thinking, who operates large fleets of dump trucks, you know, or trucks that are in that category, you know, they probably have some relevancy to this conversation.
Yes, exactly.
I'd love to see them included because, you know...
I agree with you, and we will look into that and register them. I will say, yes, your larger vehicles are the ones that cause the pavement damage. The more they track, your passenger vehicles, it takes a whole lot of passenger vehicles to equal one dump truck, one loaded 52-foot semi trailer. So that is an issue. And that's one of the things, too, is are there routes, and I'm just throwing this out there, routes that need to be designated truck route only or no trucks because of that impact it has to the road. It may be interim improvements that we're looking at, staged improvements. I do want to add, we've already been tasked by you all to study Spring Hill Road. We did traffic counts along the major intersections within, on Spring Hill up to Hildale a couple of weeks ago. We're analyzing that data now, and we are coming up with some concepts of improvements and the costs associated with those improvements. The mayor is working with Celine County and the city of Benton to approach Metro Plan on this regional corridor and try to capture funding so we can start moving ahead with that corridor.
So how far north on Spring Hill? Did you study?
To the, the last intersection was Hildale.
Okay.
We picked up counts. We'll look at the entire corridor.
So a lot of our growth is being driven by points north of there, so, you know, I'm not asking why we're stopping there, but I'm saying, hey, there's a lot of growth north of there. It feels relevant, having driven out to the middle school, so it feels like a relevant area.
Yes, those are being considered. That's part of what kind of drove this to moving forward, this project. We actually are even looking at what is Plasco County doing on their side. There's not much from what we understand right now, but we would look at the improvement in any park that the city, county has, has maintenance requirements.
So how are we going to identify what a priority would be, if you got a hole that big, you had an intersection somewhere and somebody's hitting every day, and then you got one the size of this table out here, how are we going to prioritize which is which, my site selection?
We haven't developed a prioritization ranking yet, but it would be a combination of how much traffic is through the area, how severe is the pothole. Money-wise, you know, I envision that we'll have some level of, we're going to spend this much this year on the potholes in the area, and these are the priorities based on the input from the survey. That is something we'll work with the city on, what that final prioritization is, because a lot of your big projects are going to be the highest priority, but you're not going to be able to do all those in one year, in that first year. So it's, you'll have a big project each year and then minor projects as the money falls or as you can get funds for.
So how high up on priority list is Spring Hill?
Spring Hill is the top because they already have us looking at the corridor. And it's, we will have concepts, we hope to have concepts to you all, to the city by the end of the year. And once those concepts are approved, we will start working with, the way the city will start working with Metro Plan on how to get funding for that.
And it's going to be a stepped approach as well, too, is we're going to focus on what we can do now with intersection improvements. You always hear the story, when you widen, well, that's a very, very large project. We can do things immediately with intersection improvements at Hilltop, Spring Hill, Hildale, North Lake. Those things will probably be realized sooner than the Sleep Lion project.
Something else we have done and are doing, we're studying each of the long-term plans that you all have already done, the trails in parks, the drainage plan, and anything that we can do collaboratively that's on their priority list and incorporate with this, that is going to be a consideration. Comprehensive growth plan, we'll be working with them as well, and what comes out of that project to develop these priorities for the street system.
Okay. Thank you.
Jennifer, there's multiple garbage companies
Yes.
that come into Bryant, seven or eight, I think. There may be more. Have you reached out to all of them?
Yeah, I think there's in the nature, if you go to Recycle Celine's website, they list all the people that have licenses within the city, and they, in nature, is like between 15 and 17 individual hauls for the city.
We're starting with Celine Recycle first and networking through them and who is on the list to collect, to get their input.
I'm going to say this since I have the floor.
Yes.
I think it would be a big help to us if we could figure out how to do one garbage company, because that's the heaviest truck that most of those streets will ever have. And with that many, you've got multiple trucks on multiple blocks every single day when you could have only one.
Right.
And I know I've heard the voters aren't real keen on losing their favorite garbage company, but if they knew in the long run it would save money on street repairs, it might go the other way.
Well, we want to be fair and competitive, too, right? So, I mean, there are other waste haulers. There are some that focus on large, like dumpsters, commercial, you know, and then you're going to have your smaller hauls that are going to be just doing residential. So I think there's a balance of looking at multiple different possible, different haulers than just one. I mean, I think, that's an approach, definitely, but I think it's, without further from the funding committee, it's complicated, which appears to be simple solution, so.
We actually, as far as the funding mechanism, are looking at the trash cans as a way to generate revenue for the street projects. That is something we'll study harder in Phase Two. And again, it would hit a lot of pushback because it could mean reducing the number of providers in the area, and everybody has their favorite.
You mentioned you're looking at a length, specific length of Spring Hill. How many miles is it?
Three, I think we're looking at about three miles. We would start north of where the highway department completed their Highway Five widening, and then all the way up to where the city limits are on the north end.
Somebody must have an estimate of what it would take to rehabilitate a road like it is right now into four or five lanes. I see those numbers in the newspaper articles from R. D. What, do you have a guess on that, Ted?
Well, they publish, in fact, I believe Jennifer's even contributed to those cost estimates when she worked for R. D., but they publish annually a cost per lane mile. And, but you got, when you look at it, you have to take it with a grain of salt because it doesn't have engineering, it doesn't have right-of-way acquisition, but they're substantial. I mean, I think, stop me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, but you're looking at like four million plus per mile of lane addition.
And with this corridor, you're heavy with the utilities that would have to be relocated. That's not accounted for in that number.
So as we consider, sorry, shifting gears just a little bit, can you zoom out, Ted? So if we assume for a moment that our growth is on the north side, do you have like major arterial?
So the purple are minor arteries.
Okay. So could you zoom in to the north side just a little bit? We seem to have a lot of north-south corridors, but we don't seem to have a major east-west corridor. We also, and this is a separate comment, we also have the habit in, and I'll say this from the planning commission side, we tend to dismantle these plans piecemeal, like we're going to do tonight. So, you know, we as council, then as planning commission, we should really consider whether we're committed to this plan or whether we're going to dismantle it piece by piece. So it's every variance, every deletion of arterial, you know, all these things dismantle, these big plans that we pay good money for. So we have to decide whether or not we're committed to follow those as a city.
And you all have a standard improvement, typical section, four-year road system. The ideal is with the developments, they are following that plan.
Yeah, I'm not talking about road beds and stuff like that. So I'm not talking about that. Just talking about, you know, waivers on this, variances on that, you know, 10 years on planning commission.
Been stuff on the master plan that's been taken off the master plan for this or that reason, but this is redoing what we're, what we have mainly, so.
It's kind of the approach of, not only are you trying to engage with the master plan, but also improve roadways as a result of where, you know. It's great having the master transportation plan that matches the growth plan, but then you actually have pavement failing. That's a reflection, you know, travel, which you guys are referring to.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about road beds. I'm not talking about
Right.
pavement failing and paying them.
But this kind of wraps in all that, Ted.
Yeah. I noticed there's a public comments section, and I see a public perhaps wanting to comment, so do want to, I'm not running the meeting, so I can't go to that, but at some point, we should be sure to hear from the public.
Thank you, council. Thank you for the opportunity. There is an element, it's a rather glaring element that we have to consider in 2025 moving forward. We have, for all intensive purposes, capped the tolerance for additional taxes, sales tax, special taxes, things like that within our communities across the board. You're seeing that being proven as various communities from Conway to Sherwood to Pine Bluff, et cetera, are looking to pass additional sales tax, AMP taxes, bond taxes, whatever it may be, and the residents are saying no. So the opportunity to tax ourselves to a position to absorb the cost of expansion, the cost of expanding Hilltop and Hildale, your east-west corridors that launch into Spring Hill and widening Spring Hill and things like that, the palatability of our community to absorb increased taxes to do those is not there. So economically, we are shifting now to a model to where a city has to look at itself and say, how can we generate income? What can we do to take our 3% tax rate and grow that 3% tax rate to where we're actually turning into a revenue-generating machine so we can grow our budgets to do these projects and to also generate the income that is necessary for matching grants, 80, 20, 90, 10, whatever it may be. Me working with the builders and developers, we begin to assign a dollar amount per home, per residential rooftop, both in the inception of construction where materials are delivered to site taxable, to where those residents that will be in that dwelling, a family of three, family of four, family of five, whatever, and the amount of taxable revenue that they generate on a year-to-year basis and what that means to the community. That is the shift that towns like us have to start looking at. And when we're looking at our street designs, when we're looking at sidewalk designs, half-street improvements, the whole issue there, I'm asking you to do so in a manner that puts us competitive with our neighbors financially, money that we're generating, to where we give our builders and develops, developers greater latitude to make the city money by putting residents within the city. Right now, the initial work that I'm doing with UALR and some others are saying that a family of four in the city of Bryant on an annual basis will generate up to $10,000 in revenue from a 3% tax rate. Okay? So then if you look at a neighborhood that's going to put in 100 homes, you do the math on that tax rate from the point of delivery of goods to the point of those people moving into that home and shopping and eating, buying fuel, a new water meter now, a new sewer raid now, all of those things, and we have to put in, we have to put in some practices that make it advantageous for our builders and developers to come to Bryant. So one of the things the mayor has challenged us to do, and I want to say thank you to Ted and his staff in our lines of communication, is to say, okay, Benton, Bryant, Conway, Little Rock, all the surrounding communities that are under the Metro Plan umbrella, we pretty much have uniform ordinances when it comes to street development, street improvements, sidewalks. So we're all competing at the same level, but we've got to find an advantage that sets Bryant apart from these other communities that causes our developers to say, I want to build here, commercial and residential. So we need to get creative with our master street plans on how we can do that to say, you know what, developer, we're not going to necessarily put the onus of responsibility of building streets and sidewalks on you. We want you to build more rooftops, more commercial, so we can grow our tax base that grows our income that gives us that competitive advantage. Okay? That's what I'm asking you guys, and it's in your control, you as council, okay? Even on garbage pickup, the council can say, I'm not advocating this, I'm just saying you have the authority by ordinance to say, you know what, residential trash pickup takes place on Mondays and Tuesdays in the city of Bryant. You cut down your traffic flow on your streets where it's not every day. Okay? Commercial, you can't do that because some commercial spots, from experience, we pick up every day, your restaurants. But you have control, guys. You as council have control over how things are conducted within our city. I'm asking that you do it in a way that gives our builders and developers that advantage over our neighboring communities so we can generate that income. Does that make sense? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
I think we have time for a few more questions, and then we'll switch over to the park reservation. Any more questions?
What I want to know is, now I say that, that's not a right word there, do we have the infrastructure in place to police it, fire protection, all that?
So that's all included within the comprehensive growth plan, and that's included as far as future coverage, and that is covered in the previous comprehensive growth plan that we've been actively pursuing, so that we do look at where the next fire station is going to be, where's the next, how many more policemen that we need to have as a result of those. result of those? If there's no more else, we'll switch over to Pete Talks.
Can we make sure that there's no more public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Any more public comment in regards to transportation? Thank you.
All right. Good evening, guys. I'm just going to talk briefly. I know this is a workshop, so I want to leave room for questions and discussion on this, but I do want to briefly just kind of give you a little bit of background of this situation. I'm here to talk about the senior adult services provided in our community, including, oh, thank you. Down, okay. Including our senior adult center at Bishop Park. So first, we're going to start out, talk a little bit about the history of how we got to this point and what is currently going on with the operations there at the senior adult center. Talk about who Care Link is, which all of you may know already, but I've been here 10 years and I probably had never heard of Care Link until last June, when they became a lot more important in our community. And so talk a little bit about who they are, what they do, then talk about the involvement in the parks department and how I would like to ask for your support and the parks department being more involved with our operations of the senior adult center. This time of year, obviously, a big thing that we're talking about all the time is the budget. So I will touch on briefly the financial impact of what that could look like, and then I'll wrap up with next steps going on in the next weeks and months ahead. So a little bit, just briefly on Care Link, they're a nonprofit area agency on aging. They serve six counties in central Arkansas, Celine being one of those. And what they do is coordinate services for senior adults, meals, transportation, socialization, things of that nature. But a big thing of what their, their role is, is managing the state and federal funds and then funneling those to the organization that's operating that boots on the ground in that facility. Now currently, as of a year ago, they have been managing the day-to-day operations for the senior adult center at Bishop Park. And so that's where it's a little bit different. Now you guys have a handout in front of you. Like I said, that's just a brief summary of who they are and what they do. But there's more details in that right there that happened. And so if you have questions also, we do have a couple of representatives here from Care Link. We have Becky Cummings, their chief financial officer, who's here, and then also Randy Metcalf, who is their chief operating officer, and a Bryant alum is here as well, class of 2018.
Yes.
Yeah, 2018. So if you do have questions on that, they can answer more of that as well. But kind of how we got to that is, up until a year ago, Care Link is managing those funds, which come down and Central Arkansas Development Council was operating the day-to-day operations of the senior adult center, along with the Bryant Senior Adult Council, which operates the after-hours events, the dances, things like that, as well as a fundraising mechanism that offers support. And then the city of Bryant, which is the funds that you guys every year elect to give to the senior adult center out of the general fund, and the parks department, as we house the senior adult center and handle most of the utilities and maintenance of the facility, together operate the Bryant Senior Adult Center. Well, a year ago, that changed, and CADC elected to terminate their agreement to operate the senior adult center, and Care Link stepped in and started to run those day-to-day operations. So one of the things from the handout that you have, that I want you to look at on page two, right there on the, kind of the second bolded line there. So Care Link is the AAA there. They are only to be providing these services if there is no one else available to do that. That is not their job to provide these services. That is, their job is to find someone else, another entity that will step up and operate that, and they will continue to funnel those dollars there. In fact, on page three, you can see where, there for Celine County, in 2024, it went to Care Link. Underneath that it says, they actually have to request a waiver every year from the state to allow them to do this. So this is more of a, you know, they stepped in and operated this, but since then, we have, an RFP was sent out in the spring or summer?
Yes.
Yes, previously. So that RFP has already been sent out for these services. There was no bidder on that. We have now since sent that out again to find someone to bid on these services. What I would like to talk to you about is why I believe that the parks department in the city of Bryant should submit an RFP to bid on these services. The first step of that is, the first reason is simple. The senior center is located in Bishop Park. It's already there. So we're not asking to bring in someone else from outside that's going to operate this. We're asking to allow us just to expand what we're already doing right there on site. And so the second thing is, we're already supporting older adults, senior citizens with other recreation programs that we're doing. You know, we already have Silver Sneakers classes, we have water aerobics, we're already providing some of these services right there. The third thing, like I mentioned earlier, we're all, already with the maintenance cost, a lot of those maintenance costs, the utilities, things like that, that's already in our budget that we are providing anyway. So those type of things will not be an added cost to the budget because we're already, when you, when you approve the parks budget, that stuff is in there to handle this. And then the last thing is, the city of Bryant's already contributing general fund dollars to the operations of this. So whatever that amount, I think right now it's 30,000 a year, that money would no longer be leaving the general fund. Now, granted, the parks department will need monies to help do this, so I'm not saying, but it would at least stay local in our general fund. So if there are things that we're able to do that, to raise money otherwise, you know, maybe some years it's not $30,000 anymore, maybe some years it's a little bit more, but regardless, this council would have decision of where that money is going because it is staying here locally in the general fund. So also some strategic benefits to us assuming the control of daily operations. One, it gets Care Link back to being able to focus on what they do best and what they are mandated to do, which is, you know, lobby, manage those state and federal funds, and then get those to someone to operate the day-to-day operations. It allows us to focus on what we, what we do best, which is serving our community, all different areas of our community that we already provide services to. This allows us to just expand what we're doing with the senior adult services. Better coordination, scheduling of facilities. So, you know, we already, as you're, as you share space with other groups, there's challenges that come with that. We see those challenges. You know, there's, there's rooms that we have there at the center that, you know, we have to coordinate, okay, during these times it's your space, during these times it's our space. And because it's, it's not one entity, there's going to be gaps and things you're missing there. Also, Butch knows this very well, like, it's, it's pretty, I don't think Chief Men is here yet, but it's pretty common the alarm gets set, gets, goes off constantly there at the end. And that's a little bit of like, well, we're not there at that point, and this isn't us, this is them. And so, you know, there's things like that, just little things that if we're all in this and it's one group, we can, we can do that. There's some advantages to that. So cross-training of staff for added efficiency and optimal service. So obviously, there's some, some cost savings that we could probably see there, and I'll touch on that in a little bit. But, but also, like, right now, the senior adult center closes at 3:30 every day because that's when the staff of the senior adult center, the Care Link staff leaves. So, you know, if, if it becomes where we absorb that and that's in us, maybe we get able to leave it open later because we've cross-trained our staff. If the center's open, then why do we have to close those doors? Not that we would necessarily maybe run programming during that time, but even if it's just open to people that want a place to go to after 3:30 every day. So there's opportunities like that that we could see as well. And then lastly, unlocks potential for fundraising and revenue generating. You know, I can tell you, we get a lot of requests for a space that someone can rent that has a kitchen, and we don't have a kitchen in our side of the center. So not that, I mean, we would always still consider, we're not going to, you know, boot the senior adults out because we've got somebody that wants to rent it, but in the times that they're not there, the opportunity that we could have a rentable event space that has a kitchen tied to it, that, I mean, that allows us to, to other opportunities for revenue generating situations and rentals that we could have. Also, it, with, with absorbing that, it allows the, possibly the Bryant Senior Adult Council more fundraising opportunities because it opens up our facilities as well for them, that they can utilize for that. So there's a lot of benefits to absorbing that and bringing that into together. The, the elephant in the room, though, is the financials of it. I mean, the, the bottom line is CADC probably would still be doing it if they didn't claim they were losing a lot of money doing it. And I'm sure a lot of you heard that at that time. There were some changes. As Care Link came in, they found some inefficiencies that we have cleaned up, and I say we, I've taken credit already, that they have cleaned up to make it more sustainable. But I'm, I'm not going to lie to you and just say, oh yeah, this thing's profitable. This thing is, it, it's not. Now, I do think there's more things that can be done with that, which I'll touch on a little bit, but the, the number one thing there is that, yes, I mean, this is available right now because it reported financial losses. So we, we have a couple of options. They are, it, it's being opened up, it's out for bid. There could be another provider that bids on this as well, even though the last time there was not one. We could step back and say, no, we're just going to allow Care Link to continue to do it. And even though they're not supposed to, if there is no one else, they will continue to do it. However, I will say like, that there is also the potential that there has to be more cuts that are made in order to balance that. So the other option would be that we step in and we bid on this and we look to operate. And I'll be honest, like, as the parks director, the parks department subsidizes a lot of groups in our community. We offer services, provide services that we lose money on to provide that service. And I think that's part of our job, is to provide those services for our community. So even if we stepped in and operated this and it doesn't break even and it loses money, like, I think that, and I, I don't mean to speak for the mayor because he's not here, but I think you would agree that sometimes we have a requirement, though, to provide for these members of our community. And so that's the main reason that I am asking you for this because I think that we do have a responsibility to provide this service to our community. Now, with that being said, because Joy is here, she will say, we don't just have money to burn, and y'all know this too. Our, our budget's already tight, so we can't just take on things that are going to cost money. So my job and what I'm going, what I would like to be doing for the next few weeks and months is figuring out a way to make this as sustainable as possible. I've started a little bit on that, but I don't want to invest too much time in it without your blessing to move forward. And so a few of the strategic things that we've talked about is strategic planning to maximize state and federal dollars. That's something that's really already being worked on a little bit with Care Link and the staff that is currently there. I think that's something that we can assist with as well, as far as sitting down with them each, each year and making sure that we are maximizing that amount of money that can, that can come back to us from them. Staff consolidation that reduces overhead. I spoke a little bit on that earlier. I mean, there's a thing, like, I, I'll only use this as an example because the position is currently vacant, but they have a janitor for the senior adult center. We have a janitor for the parks department. I'm not sure that that's something that can't be consolidated there, you know, and there could be other opportunities like that as well, that we can find ways to do this a little more efficiently. Obviously, just like the general fund, or just like the city budget, theirs is the same way. Payroll's the number one expense. So it's, there could be things there that we can figure out to do, to, to save some money on that. Facility multi-purposing that can increase revenue generating, I talked about that earlier, different ways that we can utilize that space to, to bring in more revenues for the parks department and the city budget. And then last but not least, like I said, the city contribution stays in the general fund. So we still have that money staying here to be used however it needs to be used. So I'll wrap up here before going to questions. So next steps, all I'm asking you for tonight is, and this is going to be on the agenda later tonight, is permission to submit a letter of intent. So this is not a full commitment. All this means is that you are giving your support for me to move forward with the staff from Care Link and with Joy and her team to put a plan together for us to be able to take on these services and make it as sustainable as possible on the financial side. So if you vote yes to that later tonight, the next steps would be, I would be assessing the feasibility for the next few weeks, month or so. My plan at this point would be to come back at city council in December with a full plan for what we would like to do and how we're going to do it. And then we actually have a month even after that, but that was the last council meeting before then. I don't want to call, my plan is to get it done and not call a special council meeting if we get to that. And then on January 16th, RFP would be due and we would submit the final bid. I will say this, this has not gone through parks committee, which is rare because usually if I'm in front of you, it will be before parks committee. The reason for that was, there was a feeling that once this got out, it would spread. And so the mayor wanted you guys to hear it first. And so I have not, I, I, I will take this to parks committee in November if you say yes tonight, but this is not something binding either. This is only a blessing to continue to assess the feasibility. I do have a couple of parks committee members here tonight, though, and they were all invited to come. So, but this is news to them as well. I have spoken with a few members of the senior adult council that is in support for us to continue to at least look into this further and move forward with it. And then obviously, I've been in discussions with Care Link, as well as the mayor and, and our finance team on this as well before tonight. So any questions or anything for me?
I think the one, the one question that I have is, I know that when Care Link originally took over, but there really wasn't any idea as to how much it actually costs, right? And has some of that stuff kind of been laid out and we've got a better idea of some of those costs at this point?
I think we, we do at this point. I know that, and our CFO's here, so she can correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe just needs to answer, but I think last year, I mean, it was, I don't want to say it broke even because I think it did, but it involved the sale of some equipment that probably helped break even. But at the same time, I don't think it lost the amount of money that we were being told.
Our experience and that actual, you know, financials were not what we were expecting to wind into it. So yeah, it was, it was close to breaking even by the time we finished our full year in June.
Okay. I, I would say that the request, the $30,000 that is, is, that we give, that the city gives every year, I've heard that that probably is going to be requested to go up a little bit in order to help balance that. But, you know, I, I don't think we're that far off to be happy with it, I guess. Is, this is, I'm not, I, I will bring that back and I will give you clear numbers in December, but we are not looking at something going, we've got to find six figures here to be able to do this. No, it is not going to be anything like that type of a, of a deficit that we're, I can't find that. So if I could find that, the city budget would be in a lot better shape.
So you're basically thinking just reallocate instead of having a, a general fund, just reallocate that money into parks?
Yes, instead of that, yes. Instead of the check that gets cut, and it's all general fund dollars. So it would just be when we do the budget every year. And I will say that, not to get too far ahead, I've talked with Joy on this as well. So y'all are familiar with our budget. We have six funds within our budget. So parks general and then our major parks have their own fund. We would create a, another one. Like, so right now, 0450 is our largest. Like, we would make an 0460 that is the senior adult center that, so that there is no question that the, because some of these dollars have to go to this. Like, the, the dollars coming from Care Link can't just, we can't just roll that into the city budget and do it however we want to. So we have to be very careful on that end of making sure that they go into this fund and they're getting spent on the things they're supposed to get spent on. And I'll say this too, I've sat in a few of the senior adult councils, there's, you know, there are a lot of questions there of like, when donations come in and people give money, well, where is that going? Who is that going to? And that only becomes bigger when it goes into the city budget. People are quick to go, oh, you just spent that on batting cages or something. So we have to make sure that we're being very transparent and keeping that money separate. So our plan would be to do that.
On that note, Joy, question for you, sorry to put you on the spot, but can we, within that account, have a full, can that totally encapsulate a full profit or loss for that center? Can the books be separate enough to run it like a business and say it, it has profit, it has loss?
I, I don't know that we'll be able to do all of it because some of that, it'll be hard to allocate the labor, the other things.
All the stuff that's.
To the extent that we can, we will try to do it as much as possible. And it's very important that we keep it separated because it will trigger federal dollars.
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're used to all that. Yeah. So, okay.
Everything that is currently like that, like, the, the maintenance and the utilities are. are already, that stuff's already kind of mixed in with ours, so that part will be hard to do, but the stuff that we'll be adding.
I'm afraid we're going to run out of time for questions, so. Sorry, CareLink, for you guys, is that commonplace? Do you see that on occasion, that some of these federal dollars that go to senior, go into a Parks Department, is that something that's going to be out?
That is not something that we have with any of our contractors, but it wouldn't be the only one in the state of Arkansas to have a contract with.
Sherwood, Sherwood did, right.
Yes, so Sherwood, but they're not receiving your dollars, though, I don't think. So Sherwood is, the Parks Department for Sherwood does it. Now, I will say this, this is not in Arkansas, but I have colleagues in North Carolina and Nevada that are Parks Directors that run their senior adult centers, so I've already made those calls too, like, help me, what are the things you are doing? So I know those are a long ways away, but they are people that I have, that I can call anytime to help me with those things as well.
It wouldn't take place until July 1st, so we have the first six months of the year. Right now, it's not, it's not budgeted in 2026, it's the same way it's always been with the bid, with, you know, all that stuff, so at some point, we'll come back and do that.
So we have two board members here, do they want to weigh in and have anything to say?
You put me on the spot, I'll let you answer that.
Butch is also on board, he's well-known.
Rhonda Sanders, and I am currently the chair of the senior center council board, and Butch and I have talked with Keith extensively and with CareLink and worked with him, and we actually are supportive of this move. We understand the limitations that CareLink has, they've been very gracious to us, to work with us and to get us through this time period, but it's not their model on how they like to do things. We like this, one, we're keeping it local, we don't have anybody outside of our city coming in, running it, the people who are here know how the city works, the culture of the city, we think that is very positive, we think there are opportunities to save money by this being under Parks, because right now it does get a little crazy, this is when the center belongs to, the senior center, this is when the building is Bishop, this is, you know, all these little pieces, and we are wasting some opportunities to be more efficient with our operations and our money. And I will say that the senior council has continued to raise money that we utilize on a regular basis to help CareLink with expenses and things of that nature, and we will continue that opportunity. And we have talked with Keith about the opportunities that we could have to raise a nice chunk of money throughout the year on different things that we do, and we're committed to doing that. We just think this will be a really good thing for our council members and for our members here at the center. Thanks.
Any other questions or anything for me?
Any reason not to believe that current staff will migrate over to a new operator?
I don't think, I mean, like I said, I'm not, because I wanted you guys to hear this first, so.
But any reason?
No.
You know the people, you know the players.
I have no reason to believe that unless y'all know something that I don't.
Because that could be a significant challenge.
And I'll be, like, if, I mean, this is, we're getting ahead of ourselves here a little bit, but like, for the ones that are visiting there, it's not going to be that much of a difference, like, you know, if the staff carries over, I mean, the staff carried over from when CADC left and CareLink enjoyed those roles, so, yes, I don't see where we would, there would be a lot of issues there on that side of it.
My last question's about liabilities, you know, where does the liability transfer to, who has it now, who would have it in the future?
That's a great, great question. I would, I would assume that that's going to not change that much and just come, because we already are over the facility, so the facility side of it is on us anyways with the liability, but I would definitely.
You may have none of it now.
But the Bryant Senior Council actually has a liability policy to cover after-hours from CareLink, so anything that we do after those hours is covered under our policy, several million dollars.
Yeah, which that may be a consolidation, like, we could probably talk about how, you know, it may involve that we staff some things during those after-hours, but those are things we can figure out with them too and maybe simplify this.
A lot of the federal funds that come in that CareLink directs and will continue to direct even with him in there, specifically for specific items that cannot be used in any other way than the aged adults that Bryant Senior Center services and the food program and those type of things. All that will have to be kept separate in the kitchen, that's one of the reasons why we don't use the kitchen right now, because it's completely stocked with the commodities that was bought by them, and we're going to have to devise, and that's what he was talking about, making some expansion into the other kitchen so we can keep things separate so that it can be used, because we used to make quite a bit of money just on pancake breakfasts, you think of all the stuff that takes cake, takes place out there at the park, there's a lot of pancake breakfasts going on, and we had to stop because all the food and everything got, started getting stored in there, the commodities and.
Those are things we can figure out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that completes our time for the Park Cop, no action obviously, but obviously we can come up during discussions.
All right, we'll do that. Before city council meeting.